Thank you. All right, seeing how we are live now, welcome to the June 7, 2021 study session. Back to the budget again, and I don't know who I'm turning it over to, someone who's a lot better with numbers than I am, Mr. Schreger or Ms. Pack.
I'll kick it off very briefly and quickly turn it over to Ms. Pack. But as you mentioned, we're in the throes of budget season. We have a lot of work to do. Just historically, there's a number of topics that we cover in study session. July 5 is a holiday for us, which will impact, we won't have a meeting on that date. So as we progress through this, we may need to have conversations with you about extending or starting study sessions earlier, if that's a possibility. But Debbie's done this drill a number of times, and we're kind of recapping some of the things we covered in strategic planning, but starting with fund balances and kind of where we ended last year and where we find ourselves at the moment. So with that, I'll turn it over to Debbie.
Thank you. Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. One thing that has thrown a little bit of wrench in our kind of schedules this year, as you recall, there was a change to the tax lid, I'll call it statute, which requires us to notify the county if we are going to go over a tax neutral mill levy rate that they won't provide to us until June 15. So we won't really know what the rate is until June 15, and we have till July 15 to tell them whether we're going to stay under that number or not. So it does put a little bit of a crunch onto the schedule that we normally have, and it can affect, it may affect our timing as far as when we actually adopt the budget. So as we go through the budget process, we'll kind of keep our eye on that and kind of know that those dates could change at any time. So as Mike said, today's study session is really a preliminary study session for the actual budget. We're going to go over some of the 2020 results as we have them as of May, target balances that we're looking forward to for 2022, an update of where we are right as of the end of April in 2021. We have provided in this one, which is a little unusual, we've provided you with the 2022 operational requests from departments so that you can kind of see where we begin. We did not include personnel because those numbers have not been calculated, but we included anything else that the departments kind of have those request controls over. And we've also included in this budget session, some of the things we talked about in strategic planning, about some of the initiatives that we see that we would like to move forward this year as we go through the budget study session. Where am I at, Jacob? So the first thing we're going to do is we're going to review the, are you doing this or am I?
Or neither.
Okay, both of us, neither of us. We're going to review the 2020 results. We have looked at these, we probably looked at these back in February. They were very preliminary at that time, some of the entries were not made. These numbers have been through the audit process but haven't been finalized. So these are probably closer to what we'll end up with because we have done some of the adjusting entries that we are required to do by state, by the audit. So in looking at the general fund, if we look at the budget, the 2020 budget column, we budgeted $44 million, $6,000 in revenue. We came in at $43 million, roughly $500,000, which was about half a million dollars under what we originally budgeted. And on the expenditure side, we budgeted about $43.9 million, and we came in at about $37.8 million, which was under budget a little over $6 million. That enabled us to recognize a net income of $5.7 million. And as we know, in COVID, we didn't know what was going to happen, so we were very conservative in how we were not only looking at what we expected revenues to do, but also how we were reacting on the expense side. So as we recall, we did work share, we did reductions in capital, we did part-time cuts, we did, I mean, we did a lot of things that enabled us to get to this point. And so I don't want people to be, just think that, oh, they made all kinds of money. No, there was a lot of work that went into that, that process, and we did a lot, you guys made a lot of decisions that enabled us to be at that point, because at that point in April of last year, we really didn't know what was going on. So that did, with that $5.7 million net income, it did leave our fund balance at the end of 2020 in the general fund of about $12 million, .7 million. Then, as we go through, I'm not going to go through this detail on all of the funds, but as we go through the target fund balances, I did provide that information as far as where the actual fund ended at the end of 2020, also updated through most of the audit. So as we looked at fund balances, currently our fund balance target for the general fund is $8.5 million. We sat at $12.7 million at the end of 2020. That number comes from a accounting policy that states that we should have more than 15 and not more than 20% of our anticipated current revenues in our fund balance, and that lines up pretty well with what GFOA recommends, which is Government Finance Officers Association. When we talk to the Moody's and people like that, they'd like to see that number higher, obviously, but this is really a good recommended policy. In the debts, in the bond and interest fund, our current balance, target balance is 800,000. That comes from a policy that says that we should have 10%, 10 to 15% of our expenditures of that year in there. That number's maybe a little bit high, but it's, it's, it's conservative, it's not very far off. And as you can see, at the end of 2020, we had a balance of $1.6 million in that fund. Arts and Humanities, we're not changing at 100,000. We had a little over, with the transfer that we had to do into that fund in 2020, we brought that fund balance up to a little over $100,000. We anticipate with the River Festival going on this year and some of the other activities that they have, that that number hopefully will gain some momentum and get back into that positive $100,000 range. Sales Tax Capital, this was another fund that we conservatively projected revenues and cut a lot of expenses in 2020, which enabled us to recognize a net income of about $4 million, leaving that fund balance of about 5.7 million at the end of 2020, with a target fund balance of $750,000. Sales Tax Economic Development Fund, we also have set it a $750,000 target balance. That's to enable us to be able to actually fund an economic project that comes into our doors when we need to. That fund balance at the end of 2020 was about 715,000. I will note that we do have a project that we've committed to at Schwann's for about 615,000, or 650,000 of that funding, so that fund probably will fall well below its fund, the target fund balance in 2021, depending on when that money goes out to that, that A lot of the funds that we have, that we budget, are just pass-through funds. That would be the Business Improvement District, the Tourism and Convention Fund, Special Alcohol, and those funds, since they're pass-through funds, we don't anticipate a fund balance leaving, leaving a fund balance in those, so we don't have a target on those. Special Parks and Recreation Fund, we have a minimal balance just for cash flow purposes of 50,000. I will note of that $465,000 that was left in the fund balance in 2020, we have made a preliminary commitment to the tennis project, which will utilize a lot of that fund balance if we move forward with that project. Special Gas Fund, we did utilize this fund quite a bit in moving some of the projects that we were going to do in 2020. So we recognized a net loss in this fund in 2020 of $340,000, bringing that fund balance down to 1.4 million. We also budgeted that in that direction in 2021, so that number looks like it's going to come down again. We also have a commitment in this fund to the Schwann's project of $900,000, so we'll see that fund balance come down pretty close to its target in 2021 or 2022, whenever those funds are expended. The Neighborhood Park Development Fund, we do not have a target fund balance on that because those funds are just used specifically for neighborhood parks where those funds are collected. The Golf Fund, we did have to do a transfer to the Golf Fund in 2020. We did that transfer to enable them just a bit, to get to a point where they would have recognized the revenue they would have had, that did not get them up to their target fund balance of 100,000.
I think you skipped a page. T-PAC?
Yeah. Oh, I forgot T-PAC.
I'm keeping up with you, but you're, you went from five to seven.
Oh, sorry, my pages are flipped, sorry. I didn't flip a page. Okay, T-PAC. T-PAC, we have an ending fund balance of about 132,000. Of that funding, we also have some revenues in there that Spectra has given us for some improvements that they're intending to do. So of the anticipated $221,000 fund balance at the end of 2021, 175 of that is reserved for that, those improvements. The Former Schilling Air Force Base Environmental Fund, this is where we're holding the funds for the groundwater remediation, and you'll see what we'll, we're likely going to do is just revenue, is just budget the full amount, because that, that fund is not, we don't exactly know what that project timeline is, and until we do, until we have a better idea, we won't, we'll, we'll just fund it all out, or we'll budget it all out. Sanitation Fund has a fund balance, a target of 500,000. Their ending fund balance was $2.1 million at the end of 2020. Their fund balance, as you can see, we're going to, we're budgeting to recognize a loss in 2021, and that's because of the cart purchases that we approved to purchase out of cash instead of with debt financing in order to reduce that fund balance. The Solid Waste Fund has a fund balance target of 500,000, current fund balance at the end of 2020, $5.4 million. This is a fund that, that includes some money for approximately $1 million is set aside for waste management diversion and reduction programs within that fund balance. We also have a liability of a little over $2 million that we do not have completely covered in a reserve fund that we need to look at whether we want to transfer those funds or not into that reserve fund. So that fund does not, although it looks really big compared to the target, there's a lot of uses that are necessitated with that fund.
And you may recall, we also worked through a vehicle and equipment schedule to try to anticipate future expenditures and kind of smooth that out. So I think from staff's perspective, we're anticipating breaking up this fund balance into more dedicated purposes, so it doesn't appear as if it's an uncommitted balance when it actually is.
Now, back to the Golf Fund. The Golf Fund, as I mentioned earlier, we did have to do a transfer in 2020. Its target fund balance is $100,000. It was at 45,700 at the end of 2020. The Wastewater Fund has a target balance of $5 million. The ending fund balance at the end of 2020 was 17 million, 17.8 million roughly. And if you flip your slide to the next page, I added in there, as you recall, when we did the rate study last year, we scheduled out 10 years to see where we were going to be. If we kept rates consistent with what we had and with growth in expenditures, that fund balance is truly going to go down very quickly with the addition of debt payments for both the water plant and the south water treatment plant. And also, the other, the other information that is going to affect that fund balance drastically is that we're no longer debt financing our water main projects, that's a cash project for $2 million a year now. So we're going to see that fund balance start to be eaten up, and we kind of knew this coming into it. So we'll start seeing that get chipped away a little bit, and we'll have to review those, those fees, just like we do every fall, to see what we need to do to tweak those to make sure we're staying consistent with that fund balance. Workers' Compensation Fund, we have $750,000 target. We had a little bit over $1 million at the end of 2020. As with the Health Insurance Fund, this is a fund that we are, we're anticipating doing a policy on fund management because it is a fund that comes, the fees come from other funds. So we anticipate that fund policy coming into effect sometime, probably in the next year, so we can kind of evaluate when we can adjust fees and things like that. All those fees come from other, other funds because they're covering the cost, workers' comp for, for the city.
And you may recall, at the time of, recently, at the time of renewal of work comp, limits went up for law enforcement and public safety, and so that caused us to recognize that we probably need to revisit that reserve fund, so, reserve balance. So combination of that and then trying to replicate the Health Insurance Fund reserve analysis process for work comp, we expect that the 750 number is going to go up.
The Health Insurance Fund, we're still recommending $2 million. This is the one we did put in the plan, and it has an evaluation date at the end of the plan year, which will be the end of 2021. So at that time, what the policy says is that we'll evaluate that, calculate what we believe that fund balance should be, and then make any adjustments as we need to do, or do a rate holiday, or whatever we need to do to manage that fund balance closer to its target. The Central Garage Fund has a target of 100,000. It ended the 2020, 2020 year with about $314,000.
Quick question on the Central Garage Fund balance. If we, if we do go with something like with the vehicle leasing like we've been talking about, does that make this fund less volatile? Because I know that it's, it has, it can have the potential to have some kind of wide swings, and it's difficult to...
The, I guess you could say it would lessen expenses potentially, and that's part of the assumption of that, that fleet management plan is, some of those bigger ticket items would be under warranty, or we trade off the vehicles before they, they occur. In terms of staffing, and part of our revenue comes from maintaining vehicles for other agencies, and that would continue, and so that revenue source would be there. I do expect the expenditures would still fluctuate, just depending on equipment. One of the things that we recently discussed as part of the budget discussions was that it is showing some net positive and bringing, possibly bringing on a temp, administrative staff person to inventory parts and order parts and keep track of purchase orders and accounting, so that our, the head of Central Garage can be out in the, in the...
Doing what he needs to do, right.
Supervision. So we think that it's performing well enough that it can support that.
Thank you.
Slide eight was the one that I referenced with the water rate study, showing that fund balance was depleted. The next section that we're going to look at is where, where do the funds sit as of April 30 of 2021? It's really hard to tell exactly what's going to happen throughout the year because not all revenues or expenditures are cyclical, they're not level in their cycles. So for example, property tax is typically collected in two halves. We know historically that we typically collect more than the first half, in the first half. We usually collect about 50 to, 55 to 60% in the first half. Sales tax kind of fluctuates up and down a little bit. Expenditures typically, in the contractual and commodity, typically trail. However, with our change in our purchasing policy, where purchase orders have to be done upfront, we're seeing that kind of, that shift, and where we're seeing a lot of those expenses come into the, into play a little bit earlier in the year, as opposed to seeing them show up at the end of the year. And what we really try to focus on when we look at these numbers is, how are we doing, the column number three, how are we doing compared to what we were doing last year, which 2020 isn't exactly a good year to compare, but with our revenues, since they did come in fairly close to what we budgeted, though, you know, that's a good indicator. And then kind of to look in, in the second to the last column from the right, which is what percentage of the budget have we used or, or collected so far? And at this point in the, in the year, we should have seen about a 33% collection or expenditure rate. So we kind of look at those numbers and kind of see where are we at, and see if there's any big adjustments or, or concerns that we might have. And as you can see in the, on the revenue side, this is showing, did I update this? I thought I updated this, but I evidently didn't. The transfers are not reflected in this number on the, in the fourth quarter, or the fourth period in here. I did that, but evidently didn't update this. So that's why that, that number looks like we're less in our, our revenue side than we were this time last year, because we actually did our inter-fund transfers in April of last year. So that $4.36 million in inter-fund transfers should be actually in the actuals of 2020, or 2021. The numbers that I've highlighted that are concerning are other taxes, which is, is our liquor tax, that's down a little bit compared to what we think it should be. Investment income, that's, can be cyclical, depending on if we have CDs or things like that, that are out, that maybe don't pay interest until a certain date, or because if they were issued, if we, if we bought those CDs in May and we get interest every six months, we won't see that until that, that period of time. So that one could be a little bit off. And then fees and charges are a little bit off in accordance with that 33%. But there again, a lot of those are parks fees, so as we get closer to the summer, we would anticipate that that number would come up a little bit higher. So as we get through the summer and get towards the end of the summer, and that number still shows low, then that to me, could be very concerning. On the expenditure side, that, nothing really stuck out as far as I was concerned, as far as the comparisons from the two, either the year-to-date or the comparison to the other to last, this time last year. But we, at this point, we're still, we're still budgeting that we'll have about a half a million dollar net income at the end of 2021. The other funds, same thing, same type of analysis. Arts and Humanities, we know that most of that revenue doesn't come until the River Festival, so that's not, doesn't surprise me at this point. The expenditures do come in a little bit earlier, so those expenditures might be a little higher than what, what that 33% might show. Nothing that we saw that would make us be concerned at this point until we can kind of get an idea of how the River Festival is going to perform. Business Improvement District is a pass-through, so we, that's just, money comes in, money goes out. Sales Tax Capital Fund, and I think I have these notes a little bit later, we are seeing that sales tax is up a little bit from last year, and as we get through the slides and we talk about this fund a little bit more specific, I have some more data on where we are exactly at this time of year. The expenditure side is up because of that purchasing policy that I spoke about earlier. We've done purchase orders a lot, on a lot of those expenditures, as opposed to before where you just saw it when we got it, when we paid the bill. So that one really, looks like it might be tracking, that our revenues might be up a little bit, but we know that number changes all the time, so it's a little hard to tell. Sales Tax Economic Development Fund, we're budgeting a loss, and we've recognized that this, this is an occurrence. We could recognize that, we could show this as a, not as a loss with the revenue coming in a little bit stronger in sales tax than, than we budgeted. It'll just depend on how, how that number shakes out. I did provide here what that breakdown of that expenditure is, our SCEDO, our SDI, and our Save-A-Lot commitments for 2020, and a note that we do have a $650,000, $650,000 commitment to a grant match in this, out of this fund balance.
So I'm kind of, need to make sure my mic's on, sorry. Kind of repeating Debbie's prior comments, but as you can see, there are those three commitments of three, total $370,000 a year, so that level of commitment basically is a break even for the revenue that come, that's currently committed to the Economic Development Sales Tax Fund. What that doesn't do then is build a balance of funds to be put towards economic development projects. We've done that, we had a balance, and we committed that recently, and we've had some good economic development successes, so feel good about that. But just want to be clear that at our current funding level, we're just kind of breaking even annually going forward.
And when, in the budget cycle, will, we will have discussions about the funding levels when we get to like the outside agencies?
Correct.
Okay.
And the Save-A-Lot commitment, it does have a time limit on it, so it will go away. But again, we're talking about $25,000 when we're talking about economic development grants in the $600,000 range, so at $25,000 a pop, it'll take a while.
It's no longer Save-A-Lot, but we transferred that to the new...
Yes.
Yeah, as a little bit more detailed, that was a sales tax reimbursement agreement that we entered into as they were considering renovating and locating at that location. And then as the Starbom project came on board, that captured the sales tax increment, and so we then are funding that financial commitment out of this Economic Development Fund.
And there's two sides to that commitment. We have, we have, where we've set a 3.9% of sales, of special sales tax to go into this fund, but then we also have those outside agencies that are taking those funding. So there's kind of two sides to that, that story. Tourism and Convention is tracking lower than we would have anticipated, not surprising because of what COVID did to the tourism industry. These numbers include just the first quarter of 2021 distribution, which is through the end of the year, or through November of 2020. So anything that we saw for hotel stays after November would not be included in these numbers yet.
So that, that is transient gas tax revenue, and as Debbie said, we're, we're trailing there. We've had conversations with CVB and about what they're seeing in terms of average daily rates, and while occupancy is up, average daily rates appear to be down, so that kind of offsets the revenue there. And then a personal observation that I shared, and I don't know how to reach conclusions on it, but you know, historically, my observation is we would have a lot of hotel parking lots full Monday through Friday with business travel. And then we had consistent hotel stays, and so with COVID and Zoom meetings and interruption of business travel, that certainly explains why the numbers are off in the short run, but then the question becomes, what will business travel look like, and what will tourism in general look like going forward? And we're seeing it start to rebound, but it's not fully recovered, and don't entirely know what to expect just yet.
The next two funds, the Special Parks and the Special Alcohol Fund are both funded by the liquor tax. We're seeing that number down a little bit as well from 2020, or from our, what we budgeted in 2021. This goes through the March distribution, so that too could be just a number that needs, that hasn't quite come back up from COVID, the effects of COVID on, on that.
I'm sorry, I'm thinking out loud now, but the special alcohol, is that liquor store based? Could that be impacted by drive-through alcohol sales being a retail?
No, the liquor, the special alcohol is drinks per, like restaurant drinks and things like that, so. But it could be affected by now that people are going out more and things like that, that number, we, we would hope that we would see that number rebound a little bit. So when you go to Applebee's, get yourself a drink.
Or two.
Yeah, or two, yeah. Special Gas Tax, these collections are through March 31, 2021. That number looks pretty strong at 55% of what we budgeted, however, we're looking at what we budgeted, so you know, it's comparison, it is down from what we had collected at this time last year. So we'll have to keep an eye on that number to see if it's tracking back to where we, we thought it would be back in 2019, compared to 2019. Neighborhood Park Development is based on mortgages that are in specific neighborhoods, so that number, as we see more and more mortgages be filed, then that number should, we should see that number come up. Tony's Pizza Event Center, this is one of those funds that we have to look at, we have to watch carefully, because of course, their expenditures are based on what they bring in. So if they bring in more revenue, they ask us for less reimbursement for expenses. So this fund currently has a fund balance of, an anticipated fund balance of $307,000, but $175,000 of that is actually committed to that capital improvement that I spoke about earlier. Central Garage, again, their numbers are looking like, they're tracking fairly close to that one-third at this point, so I don't see any issues with that fund at this point. Sanitation, their revenues are up just a little bit, nothing to be too excited about, but, because that could be a lot of people getting out and taking stuff to the dump or whatever, so that's not a number that I would be too excited about at this point, and everything else looks like it's tracking on, on schedule. Solid Waste, the same, there's nothing there that we, we see in 2021 that would cause us to be alarmed at this point. And we do have the purchase of those, those carts this year still out of that fund. Golf Course, it's tracking a little bit down, but that doesn't, that's not surprising. It's, this is the winter month, so I would anticipate that revenue to start coming back online where they need to be. The revenues or the expenditures are tracking very well. In fact, they're a little bit low, so I wouldn't anticipate any huge trouble with that unless we have some other issues that we don't know about at this moment.
It is definitely weather related, or can be.
Yes. Water and wastewater, these numbers are tracking as they should. I will note that we may, we will probably have to do a 2021 budget amendment on this because we did not budget for the $2 million of cash water main in the 2021 budget. We've added it to the 2022 budget, but there was some confusion in the numbers. So we may, depending on where the, the rest of their expenditures come out compared to their... on where the, the rest of their expenditures come out compared to their budget, we may end up coming back with a, an amendment for that, for that expenditure close to the end of the year.
Debbie, it might be helpful to explain the state budgeting requirement in terms of filing and then amending, especially, and that sheds a little bit of light on why we would budget the full expenditure of the, the groundwater remediation fund as well.
Sure. So we're required by state statute to, to submit our budget for the following year by August the 25th of the current year, which makes it difficult to know what's going on. You're, you're budgeting for six months out. And, and really what we're telling them is what our budget, our expenditure authority is. So we have the authority to spend up to that level once we submit that to the state. We cannot go over that expenditure authority. They don't care about the revenue. If our revenues come in high, low, it, it doesn't matter. We do not have to do an amendment. But if our expenditures come in higher, we have to get authority to spend more than what we've submitted to the state. And so what we typically do is we, we watch that throughout the year, and if we get closer to the end of the year and it looks like we're going to be going over that authority, we, we'll do an amendment to that. The amendment has to be done in the year that you're spending the funding, so anything that we do to amend these budgets, we'll have to do by the end of the year. So depending on where they fall out, it may be November, it may be December, depending on when that actually goes over budget, so. Is that what you were kind of thinking?
Correct. And so that kind of explains what the uncertainty with the groundwater remediation, that's the only fund that we just go ahead and budget the balance and indicate that we might expend the entirety, but that gives us the most flexibility when trying, talking in big numbers like that, that project might represent and gives us the most flexibility.
The Work Comp Fund, you'll see no revenue in this fund yet. That's an annual transfer from other funds, and that's typically, I think we did them, we usually do them about November, but we may, just depending on how we schedule it out, that, that may come in a little sooner. The rev, the expense on this site is low, lower compared to what we would anticipate, so this doesn't have any significant concerns. The Health Fund, Health Insurance Fund, something that I took note of is our contractual services, which is really our claims, a lot of that is our claims, is up about $100,000 from this time last year. And we taught, we've talked about that a lot, about people holding on to their, their medical and things like that. So it's not a huge number at this point, but it, you know, it is something to keep an eye on, to make sure that we, we are tracking with those numbers and, and keeping an eye on that fund. The Bond and Interest Fund, as you can see with the property taxes I mentioned earlier, that's come in at 58% already of what we budgeted, which is not abnormal with property taxes. The, the expense side of it is low, however, that's because we only make two, we typically make two payments a year out of this fund, one in April, which is an interest-only payment, and then one, one in October, which is an interest and penalty, and principal payment, which is much larger. So you, we'll see that, we won't see the majority of that expenditure hit until October 1st. And I do expect that we'll have to do a budget amendment on this also, because when we budgeted this back in June of 2020, we had not kind of put under radar that the radio project might bond early. And so when we bonded the radio project with our refunding in October, that created a payment in 2021 that we wouldn't have anticipated to come till 2022. So we may need, depending on where the, the payments fall out in this and, and things like that, we'll probably need to do a budget amendment on this fund for that purpose.
And then you may recall our prior conversations about that fund balance and, and this, the peak that we see coming in debt service in, in the future and trying to manage our mill rate based on relying on this fund balance and kind of all the debt schedule. So while there's a balance there, staff is paying attention to that balance and how we might apply it going forward.
Yeah. So that kind of tells us where we are, where we, kind of where we are and where we ended up 2020. The next section, which is a much larger section that I'd prob, I won't cover in great detail unless you have specific questions, is the Operational Request by Division. I'll just kind of explain how we, we reported it so that you, that you and everyone else has a little bit of understanding. So each division provided us with the dollars that they were requesting for their budget, and we calculated that and, and we figured out what increase that was over their 2021 request, so that we can provide that information for you. These requests do not mean that we're recommending them at this point. We have a lot of work still to do. We just want to make sure that we're providing you this information kind of in steps as we go along. And this also kind of gives you a preview of what you might anticipate seeing as we come forward. In prior years, we wouldn't have given you this information till probably the end of June, and it's, at that point, you're going, well, what is all this? So hopefully this kind of helps you to see where we, where we start the process and kind of how we can look at these numbers.
And these don't, I don't know if you mentioned it, but these don't include personnel.
Correct. This does not include personnel. It's only the items that the departments have actual control over, which is commodities, contractual services, and capital outlay.
So what, I mean, as, as we look at that next slide 23, we see a lot of contractual services, I mean, being pretty large items within a lot of departments. Any, can you like give us any clue as to what some of those contractual services are?
For example, in computer technology, that's a large one. That's all of our maintenance agreements on software.
Okay.
So that could be part of that.
Okay.
In some departments, it might be outside contractors for the solid waste or something like that, an engineering firm that has to come in and do, you know, some of those things.
Okay.
Just, it's really, it was purchases of services. So commodities is typically purchases of items.
Right, right, right.
Products, and then, and then contractual services, anytime we have to buy somebody else's service.
Right. And so when we get to the City Commission, one that's about $450,000, $480,000, our only contractual services are with legal, is that correct?
No, with the city-county building.
Oh, for the, for, okay, for the, we pay, okay, I got you, I got you.
The legal actually has its own little division. So you'll see that, it has its own little division line a little bit later.
Okay, thank you.
And commodities, contractual, and capital were areas that department heads did a good job in 2020 of dialing back. So as we, do you see some of those increases, some of that's kind of getting back to normal or trying to pick up where we left off?
Right, because as, as we remind you, that this is compared to our 2021 budget. We didn't necessarily go back and look at this compared to what our 2019, we did internally, but this, this comparison is to the 2021 budget. So you wouldn't, it, it wouldn't surprise you to see small incremental increases for either increases in rates, increases in contractual services, or anything like that. That would not surprise me in seeing these. As we see some of the larger numbers, I brought staff, some of them. Some of them are on Zoom, so if you have any specific questions, I can answer some, but not all, or I can try to. So I don't know how much detail you want me to go into this, but if you have any specific questions about this, the bottom line, when you get to the end of the General Fund, is that with the requests that we currently have for just these categories, the General Fund is, expenses would be anticipated to increase 10% over 2021. And that is a 7% increase over 2019, actually, I did calculate that. So if you look at that over historical years, 7% from 2021 is not a lot each year. When we have 2020 and 2021 in there that were kind of goofball years, it just, over a three-year period, that's not a lot of, of increase.
And having said that, the factor in personnel as well, and we, we've got our work cut out for us still. You know, the, we've discussed previously how our revenue growth is pretty flat. We're seeing some indications that, that this year is better than some, but real hard to predict what the future might bring, given kind of the source of that, that revenue being stimulus dollars most likely. And, and we are seeing some growth. We anticipated as part of the Chuan's project and the Great Plains project that bring contractors to town and hopefully generate hotel stays, but as we've discussed, we haven't hit, we got back to normal on our hotel, hotel numbers yet. So still trying to, to figure out what the right revenue projection is going forward.
So that, that's the General Fund. Arts and Humanities Fund is down about 11%. They did reduce some funding from the Arts Board and so that, and thus reduced the expenditure side of that, so that's, that's what that is. Sanitation is down considerably, and that's because of the, the purchase of the carts in 2021. We had about $1 million of purchases in 2021 that, that will not be there in 2022. Solid Waste is fairly flat if you look at the whole fund. Golf Course is reducing just slightly, but fairly flat. The Water, Wastewater Fund is going up, and this one is, as I explained earlier, the $2 million that we didn't budget in 2021 for those water main replacements is now in 2022. So $2 million of that is that by itself. The Central Garage is going down just a little bit, but staying fairly flat. Basically, our instruction was try to stay as flat as you can to 2021, because that's, we don't, like Mike said, we don't anticipate a lot of revenue growth, especially with the property tax side. And we, we just aren't confident in what sales tax is going to do at this point, so that's what we kind of asked staff to do.
If I could double back for a second, there's a couple of things in General Fund that, that might be worth mentioning. We were trying to consolidate expenditures under computer technology and under building facility and maintenance. Historically, that has been decentralized. With computer technology, it's been a little bit of both. They've picked up the expense of certain items, and then departments would have independent spending for purchasing workstations or iPads or what have you. So we're trying to consolidate for organizational purposes, for cost-saving purposes, for warranty and maintenance purposes. And then similarly, in the building maintenance side, that's been very decentralized as well. Some things, the building facilities, Division of Parks would, would take responsibility for, and then other things, remodels or renovations within a department would come through as a capital budget item. And so we're trying to consolidate that under Troy Reiner, our Building Services Director, and, and have a lot of confidence in kind of his knowledge of our whole system and being able to help us prioritize there. So what that, what that may look like is you may see, you know, a cost increase in those two line items. It seems like a significant increase, but in some respects, it's offset elsewhere in individual depart, department budget line items.
Do you have any questions before we go on to Sales Tax Capital Fund, about any of those specific line items or funds or other questions about what's involved in there? I'll try to answer that or look it up in my little book.
And thank you for pointing out that legal was its own thing, because I did just, I, I see that within there. And so basically, and my math is always suspect, Debbie, as you know, but from 2020 to 2021 and 2022, we're going to be going up about 20% from 2020 to, to, to 2021, and then we're carrying that forward in 2022?
That's what we're budgeting.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean, I think we probably budgeted that same amount in 2019.
Okay, okay.
And came in at $497, so it's not, it's not a highly complex calculation on that account. Sometimes those numbers are just carried forward to be quite honest.
And one thing that I'll be bringing forward to you shortly is Clark Meis and Lindville is providing backup city prosecutor services when items are appealed to district court. So looking at that number, I think there's cost savings to be had to consider bringing on an assistant city prosecutor rather than contracting with Clark Meis and Lindville. The, the volume's gotten such, plus that you add to it kind of the backlog of COVID, and now we're coming out of that, and, and we're seeing that volume pick up. So we've done some financial analysis of whether that pays for itself or saves money, and I'll be bringing forward a recommendation for a assistant city prosecutor shortly.
The only other, are we, there, we were kind of skipping around, and I don't know if we've gotten to page 27 yet.
No, go ahead. I wasn't going to talk about anything else.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't think you were, so. I just had a, a question about like the, the parks downtown and landscape. I know that the commission had received an, an email last week from a downtown business center who was concerned about the upkeep on the planners downtown, and I was just kind of curious as to what like, what our investment is from the city side, because I see the commodity, so I'm assuming that's all the, the planning material and, and, and. Is that just the percentage of like a, a park staff person that we have that, that works downtown, or how?
Yeah, actually, a lot of what would address that maintenance is on the personnel side, which isn't in this number.
Okay, that's right, right.
Staff, if, number one, if we can get them hired. And then additionally, you know, be the first to acknowledge that we took on that park maintenance, or that landscape maintenance increase associated with the downtown project without increasing park staffing. So we've got added responsibility, and we're having a increasingly difficult time to fill the part-time positions that we have. But from a budget standpoint, the, that wouldn't be in the numbers you're seeing there on page 27.
Just signed the, the agreement for.
Okay.
That is in here under the Parks Administrator, or the Parks Parks, the top section of that in that contractual, that would be in that budget line item, because it's an outside party doing those, that, that mowing service for us.
Got you, okay.
I know we were having trouble getting seasonal staff. Are we still having troubles there, or are we going to have to look at outside contracting to do some, some, some of that work?
We've actually done a little bit of that, additional contract services and, and got some favorable numbers, it looks like. So that gives me a little bit of optimism. Haven't had a conversation recently with the Parks Department. I do know, you know, with school getting out, we're seeing an uptick in applications, and we've been able to fill at least some athletic positions, dragging, lining ballfields, things like that. Don't know within the last week and a half where we stand on landscaping applications, but combination of getting the application and then being competitive pay rate wise with other opportunities that the applicants have.
And we are still short for part-time seasonal for landscaping, but we did just get a contract going with landscape consultants to start doing some work downtown that, that'll start later this week.
On those seasonal jobs, is there a minimum age? Is it 18? Do you know?
Depends on the work.
I'm just curious, I guess Jacob, on the landscape consultant's contract for further work downtown, specifically what kind of work?
Weeding and spraying, I think, is specifically.
So you're talking all maintenance type of, okay.
And that's just for, for the planners on Santa Fe? We'll still be doing the, the stuff that's off Santa Fe. So just the new stuff?
And, and so probably when we get to the outside agencies funding, we'll be able to have that number, like for us to know what it's going to take us to do that through a private company versus staffing it through on our own. And I mean, that's just one more part of the equation of what, you know.
Correct.
We only may see $95,000 in operational subsidy, but that's another, that's another element that we do provide.
Plus, as part of the, the Starbarn, downtown Starbarn Development Agreement, there is an allocation that goes to Slade of Downtown Inc. for programming, security programming, and maintenance. And so we've, you know, by way of agreement, divided up maintenance responsibilities in the downtown between us and, and S D I as well.
And I don't know who this question goes to, but since we're on this, it just dawned on me. As far as collecting the trash downtown in the, in the trash containers, is that contracted out, or is that a city?
That was one of the things S D I is taking care of as part of.
Okay, that's my question, because, and I don't know if it's because we have more traffic downtown, but I have noticed that those have, have gotten filled up, and I don't know how often they're being emptied, so that's something.
I do know they have a dedicated person by way of contract for that, but I don't know the scheduling of it.
Maybe something.
Yeah, I don't either. We can touch base with them for sure.
Okay.
Just for clarification purposes, those contracts, like Jacob was mentioning, for the weed planters, will not be part of our normal outside agencies. The, normal outside agencies would be OCCK, S D I, The Chamber, and S C E D O. We wouldn't go into that much detail. I just want to make sure we're.
Right, I just.
Unless you want more specific requests, we can get that information.
You know, I, I mean, I just think it, sometimes it helps that when we can see the entire picture of the resources that we're putting into something like, you know, like S D picture of the resources that we're putting into something like, you know, like SDI or, you know, you know, we've talked in the past about, you know, what we supply to the community theater or the art center. And, you know, sometimes it's just helpful to to know what our total investment.
Sure.
In a facility or a project is.
Sure, we can add that information in there.
Thank you so much.
So that brings us to the sales tax capital fund. And it kind of shifts from what the requests are and kind of gets into more of the strategic planning that we talked about. As you can see from from this that we provided earlier, the sales tax do appear to be up. I will say that in, for the May distribution that we just received the end of May, our overall sales and use tax, both city and county, were up about 11.42% from prior year. Our city was up about 10.7% from prior year. That's cumulative from the prior years. Now, what we're seeing and probably what you're hearing in the newspaper and magazines is if we look at month by month comparisons, our May of 2021 was 34% higher than our May of 2020, but we were kind of in the kind of the beginnings of COVID then. So you're hearing a lot of numbers going on out there, but it's not always comparative to what we're giving you. So I just wanted to make sure that 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 was understood, you know, that you can understand that. But we are seeing double-digit at this point increases in our collections and sales and use tax over last year. And typically, we do see that happen. It kind of goes up and then it kind of levels off a little bit down. And so we, you know, that doesn't indicate that we'll be in the double digits by the end of the year. So hopefully, we'll have that number ironed out. 2020 finished about half a percent above 2019, which for COVID was pretty amazing. And let's see what other information. I just wanted to give you this information because we will be looking at the fund balance in in the sales tax capital fund. We talked a lot during strategic planning about the historical unspent funding for the categories that we had kind of committed to when we did the sales tax initiative back in 2016. And we looked at those numbers to see if we could kind of figure out in the budget how to how to get those things back on track. So if the unspent funding in, for example, in parks is about $973,000 from 2017 to 2020. In streets, it's a little over $1 million. And there's the other categories all have some unfun spent funds. However, we did spend funds that we didn't commit to, which was the half a million dollars to the Lee Building. And then we had some work by HDR on the area around T-Pac for for some consulting that we had done over there. So if you kind of level those all out, we have about $3.6 million in in unspent funds that we had committed or or we've spent that we didn't commit to. And it's it's trying to figure out how we, if we, if we can get those numbers back to those particular categories and how we do that and the most, the most effective way. So one of the places that we also talked about during strategic planning was the Kenwood Cove Maintenance Project and I just, or fund, I brought this, this is the exact same thing we saw before where we scheduled out what the maintenance was going to be, the next two slides on 36 and 37. We scheduled out what our anticipated plan was for those maintenance requirements and then what the funding requirements would be for the, for that fund in order to support that maintenance schedule. The next slide kind of talks about some of the budget initiatives that we did bring up in in strategic planning, but that we've kind of honed in on some of the numbers and kind of where we were hoping to move forward with these. So in order to to capture some of the funds that we have are unspent for allocation sales tax, we're probably, we're going to be recommending that we create a park maintenance fund, which would would include a transfer of of the entire $500,000 that we allocate or whatever amount we allocate annually into that fund so that those funds can be segregated and kept for that purpose only. We would anticipate transferring about $370,000 into that fund in 2022, leaving the $600,000 that we've kind of left for the tennis project back on the burner for that project when we make that commitment going forward. We would anticipate, we would like to create a vehicle and equipment replacement fund. This is an area that we talk about a lot, that we have old equipment. That's not just vehicles, that's going to be addressed by the fleet in the enterprise project, but but there's a lot of other vehicles and equipment that we need to kind of get on top of and stay in front of. We would anticipate transferring that annual budgeted allocation to this fund and then capturing if we had any savings from that. So if we had where we had come in under budget, we would leave that fund, money in that fund so that we can utilize that for equipment as we move forward, instead of it getting kind of lost in the sales tax capital fund and then used for whatever might come up. The other fund that we're recommending to create. Fleet management system. We're, we, we would like to see a transfer of $1 million go into that fund in order to kind of get it started so that, the way that fund's going to work is we're going to lease vehicles, we're going to sell vehicles, so there's going to be a lot of in and out of that fund. We're going to be making payments out for the leases, we're going to be collecting money for what we sell. Then what some of what we lease is going to sell, so we're having money come in, but we're still continually having to pay that that lease. The maximum lease amount that they're projecting is about $1 million at this point, so we felt like that was a good place to start to make sure that we had that until we could kind of get a couple of years under our belt to see how that fund was kind of reacting and playing and seeing how those numbers were coming in. And then we could always utilize that funding for vehicles and equipment that we had to The sales tax, a special gas tax balance that we have a little bit over $1 million in there, we would anticipate leaving for the $900,000, I think this is a KDOT grant match, not an EDA.
Correct.
Grant match. And in order to kind of address the Kenwood Cove Maintenance Fund, we would anticipate the, to allocate a portion of any annual gains that we see. So if we see sales tax revenues come in above what we anticipate, hopefully taking some of those additional funds and putting it into that that Kenwood Cove Maintenance Fund. And we'd like to see some commitment of spending some of, at least part of the unspent funding for streets, hike, bike and buildings and facilities as our growth, again, allows us to do to kind of continually spend some of that money for those funds. This fund, as you know, prior to this presentation, we've always given you that huge spreadsheet with all the information on it. So I've been trying to break it down into into smaller pieces just so that we can see what those numbers look like. And so on this next slide, there's a lot of information here, but but what I wanted to give you was some, some different scenarios. So the first graphic is the sales tax that we have projected right now goes through 2036 at a growth of 0.5% sales. It's half of a percent growth a year on the sales tax. If we, if we continue with that process, I mean, if if that's how growth kind of tracks out, we would have a balance of $1.8 million after we made our last debt commitment out of that fund. So the first column is, the second column is where our fund balance would land based on that tax growth assumption of half of a percent. And that's the number we've been showing you all along. We've used half a percent for a while because we really weren't getting any higher than that. If that model goes to 1%, where our growth tends to be 1% a year, that fun, ending fund balance goes back up to $7 million based on what we have committed today for the river project and all of those other allocations that we always, that we have in there for streets and parks and all those, without any changes to those commitments. If we saw no growth, so I'm trying to give you both sides of the picture here. If we saw absolutely no growth in sales tax from from 2020 going forward with all of the commitments that we have, we would have an ending fund balance of $382,000 at the end of 2036. And this all assumes, one, that sales tax does not get recommitted and that the expenses that we've committed to don't change as far as our allocations and those things that we've got in that, that, that spreadsheet. I will say that that our seven-year average, growth rate average from 2013 to 2019 was 1.42%. And from 2018 to 22, 2020, it was 1.6%. So that's what our sales tax has been growing on average over those those periods of time. So basically, this last little table is just what we're recommending that we transfer based on those initiatives on the previous page for, out of the sales tax capital fund at this time. Any questions about sales tax capital or our initiatives or kind of where the direction we're moving on any of those?
No, but I really appreciate the fact that you've taken the different scenarios, I mean, from 0% up to whatever, you know, 1.6 and and shown how that actually plays out. And I, for one, think that's very helpful and I just want to thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Do you think that because a portion of our sales tax is coming through the internet, that's going to change any of that balance? We don't have much history on that yet, but during the COVID year, that spiked and, you know, anybody got a sense of?
We, we do.
Is that all a level thing or?
No, we do see that number continue to rise at a higher percentage rate than our sales, our on-the-ground sales tax. But we're still seeing that number significantly lower than our sales tax that we're seeing in brick and mortar streets or shops. We're talking in the hundreds of thousands of dollars on the use tax, which would be use tax compared to the millions of dollars in sales tax. So we're not seeing those dollar amounts go up very high, but the percentages are increasing.
And, you know, one point of conversation was we're also seeing our, our pull factor go down. And, you know, the pull factor is spending from outside of our local economy that's happening in, to our benefit. And you have to think that, you know, internet sales, previously someone probably commuted to Salina to make that purchase in person. Now they can make that order and have it delivered to their door. So that may explain some of the, we're seeing the percentage rise in internet sales tax by our own residents, but our pull factor decline may be a function of people being able to do that in in the region and not have to commute to Salina.
Right, right. Any other questions on sales tax?
Well, in that context of being a regional poll, I kind of see baseball in that light. I don't see anything about baseball in this budget. I don't think we're totally depending on the transient guest checks to fund all of that. So if our commitment is going to be where they've asked it to be, where are we going to make up the difference?
We're still talking about that.
Yeah, I'll tackle, yes. One of the very next things that we recognize that we need to talk with you about and the governing body about is how to allocate those fund balances. I mean, on the assumption that we, we agree with the general fund reserve balance number, that still leaves some excess there to be allocated along with the American Rescue Plan funding and trying to size that up. So some of the next slides are the American Rescue Plan discussion, but we anticipate as a staff, we're going to have to come back to you with more details on what's eligible for American Rescue Plan, what we think our allocation will be, and itemization of kind of that inventory of of requests or projects. You know, as we went through strategic planning, we talked about deferred expenditures and some back-of-house items in terms of agenda management and website and time and attendance and vehicles and equipment. But then we also identified projects of baseball and tennis and the park master plan, housing, fire station number four, sidewalks, the river renewal and the groundwater remediation. So I think one of the tasks that we have before us as staff is to assist you, which is a little different than we've done in years past of, here's available funds, here's identified possible uses and help you go through a prioritization exercise so we then can answer the baseball project question along with housing and some of those other big ticket items.
Well, and, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to add, we had that list of bridges from our strategic planning too. I mean, if maybe if we could knock out a, a bridge with some of those funds, that would might be something to consider too. Sorry.
Could you discuss a little bit about, you know, how conversations are are going between the city and county because I know they've received 10 million? Is that what I?
Yes, that's my understanding that.
And, and again, the city being in the county, those, those dollars can benefit us also. And it seems to me like there ought to be some kind of joint meetings or, I'm not saying it's us, but with staff to kind of see how best we can merge those dollars and and keep as many of those dollars as possible in our community and.
Yep, and it's not directly related to your question, but we did meet with the county commission, Lauren Driscoll and I met with them on housing and walked them through the housing study and the RHID funding and IRB and some of those tools. So I think was productive and they, they certainly wanted to have an ongoing conversation at the staff level and reporting back to the governing bodies in terms of requests that we get for housing. Then similarly, staff has been having conversations about the allocations between the county and the city and the school district for that matter. One thing that that's come up recently that relates to American Rescue Plan funding that is going to the county commission is the Slina Airport Authority has identified the possibility of a, of a additional destination being Houston as a possible third destination. And they've made a request of the county, in part because the county is already receiving funding, we still are waiting for tranches to be distributed. And so I think the county commission is taking that up tomorrow. In fact, the county administrator reached out to me this morning asking whether the mayor could provide a letter indicating where the governing body stood on that. I kind of declined. And so I think we all collectively see the benefit in it, acknowledging that we're just getting started in our budget process and our review of American Rescue Plan funding. So I wasn't in a position to say where those funds might go. So that, that's a long-winded answer to whether a step behind the county in terms of funds distribution. And my focus has been really kind of preparing you as a governing body to provide us some direction, recognizing we're going to need to coordinate with.
And I understand they've, they've hired a consultant or someone to help them with their analysis.
Yes, they've brought someone on board, I think, to help them with compliance determinations and administration of those funds just to ensure that they're compliant with the requirements. I put that burden on Jacob.
I really, no, I love your suggestion though about, I mean, I don't know if it looks like two governing bodies getting together, but at least having some sort of coordination between the the two entities.
Because, because I guess one of my questions also is, and and again, I pulled up the document, I think it's what, 150-some pages? And so I just glanced through it. But, you know, it talks about, like you said, investment in water sewer broadband, as you, as you've stated in the the documentation here. Does it talk about, does that have to be current water and sewer reach or sewer infrastructure? Can it be new? I mean, we're talking about the RHID. Is this a way that we can lower, you know, some of the requests on the RHID and fund that?
Yeah, it certainly could be used on any new water and sewer project. I mean, that's, I think that's one part of this that's very clear is water and sewer is eligible. So anything that has to do with water and sewer, and actually, I think sanitation or not sanitation, sanitary sewer as well, so storm sewer is eligible as well. Outside of that, that's where it starts to get kind of fuzzy on, on, you know, the definitions of what, where it can and can't be used.
Well, it seems to me like there's a definite need for that as we're addressing our housing requirements. That may be a way to to keep us from having to do some of the the tax abatements that are being asked and stuff, so.
We fully recognize that, you know, that is a priority. We're going to have to read some conclusions about eligible uses and some possible strategies. You know, one of the things is recouping ourselves for lost revenue. And so while we talk about, you know, the savings that we realized in 2020, there's also that, just the lost revenue in and of itself is an eligible reimbursement. So if we can, if we can get a clear understanding of what's eligible and we can quantify that, that then is kind of, in my mind, a first step that we reimburse ourselves and then you have greater latitude to apply it to, you know, whatever projects you prioritize. But fully recognize that, you know, we, we have that laundry list, baseball may have been definitely on that list, that we need to work our way through that discussion so you can get.
So will staff come back to us? I mean, you know, as we look at our target fund balance and, you know, right now, the general fund's 8.5 million, you know? And I, didn't we at one time kind of have a target of 10 is where we really kind of wanted to get? Or is that just maybe we just talked about it?
The recommended percentages of 15 to 20%, eight and a half is kind of that top end. I can't say that we haven't had 10 in the conversation.
And I'm, I'm a firm believer in a savings account for, for rainy days, so don't get me wrong, but when I look at a, at a, a. me wrong, but when I look at a, at a, a fund of 12.7 million and if our target's 8.5, not that I want to spend all that, but we do have some needs, whether it's, you know, the, because Bill Burke with the restrooms and, and, and station stand and the drainage issues, which then leads into the, the turfing, I think needs to be addressed, but also the firehouse and some of those things. I think we can, we need to, again, prioritize what we have, but I think that's going to be very important, we do, within the next, you know, 60, 90 days.
Agreed. We, and that's where, we, we, staff doesn't want to get ahead of you as a governing body and, and you've got some pretty significant, I think you have more identified projects and priorities than funds by the time we get through American Rescue Plan and
Which isn't unusual.
Yeah.
I mean, that's not, it's that way at my house some days, you know, so.
We have more opportunity than we've ever had. I mean, we're, financially, we've got more funds to work with than we've ever had.
Yeah.
But it, I'm reluctant to be overly optimistic to any special interest group until you as a governing body get through a prioritization exercise.
Right. And, but yeah, I think that, that's going to be a really valuable discussion to have within the governing body and...
And even if it's purchasing some, you know, some, because like you said, we, we did increase our, our, our fund balance considerably, but again, we didn't do some purchases we needed to. So, you know, if we could look at trying to get ourself back on, on better, you know, footing for the future, I think this is an opportunity to do that, so.
Definitely. And I guess the other thing I would add is my priority was getting the direction from you before we start to collaborate with the county or, or outside entities.
Just tell them to write us a check and we'll take care of it.
You know, the, the working relationship at the staff level is terrific. I think, you know, they, they're, I, I can't fault them in anything that they're doing. We kind of need to collect our thoughts and then we can start to have a collaborative conversation with them and baseball enterprises and the tennis projects moving forward in terms of their fundraising. And I do think, you know, as we talked about turf, we've, we've said what, what we want to do with the transient guest tax rate. So now we need to project what we think that revenue is going to look like, and it's a little sketchy. But I think there's an opportunity to identify what we can fund in the first 10 years and then take that revenue stream from year 11 on and have it waiting for us as a replacement fund for turf. But we're still going to have a gap that we're going to be looking to either set aside those items or fund out of general fund reserve or American Rescue Plan dollars. The other thing I would tell you is staff is trying to pursue some grant opportunities through Dane Hansen and, and land water conservation funds. And we'll see if we can kind of parlay some of our, if we have some funds to make a local match, maybe we can secure some grant funds.
But as, as far as looking at the American Rest Recovery Plan dollars, you know, I think the county surely sees the importance of some of the infrastructure when it comes to water, sewers, stormwater, that type of thing for housing, because they benefit from that as much as anybody on property taxes and stuff. So I think
Yeah, and I certainly don't want to speak for them. They did express reluctance to, you know, they, they weren't opposed, but they had a lot of questions, understandably so, about RHID and, and capturing that increment. The other thing that I would tell you is staff, you know, independent of American Rescue Plan dollars, we're continuing to have conversations about kind of the housing study, identifying, we're starting to see more and more interest in specific geographic areas and that's starting to spread geographically wider. And so between staff and RDG consultants, we're working on assessing what the infrastructure investments might cost for water, sewer, and street by unit, whether that's half mile or mile, so that we then can say which geographic area would free up or, or dollar for dollar, get the most developable area as a possible way to help you prioritize those investments.
I guess my, my only main concern, I should say, is the timing of it. You know, we've got new jobs coming to, to Salina in 2022. And as we all know, new housing apartments don't get built overnight. So we've got to be fairly conscious of the fact that this needs to continue to move at a fairly...
And we're, we're still staffing through the projects that have indicated interest. We have some others that are, you know, come on board in the last week or two that, they honestly have a proposal yet, but they're starting to indicate interest and we're working with them. So, and it, it's going to be a combination of both. And again, you as the governing body, you're going to have to reach a consensus. Just because area A may be more return on the investment if it's 36 months out versus the project that we, you know, bird in hand, if you
Yeah.
are familiar with the phrase, then that might be a deciding factor as well.
The only other thing, as we add more projects in with any newfound money, we have to remember that a lot of this growth in the general fund balance is not from economic growth, it's from money that we...
Assess agents.
Well, yeah, I didn't want to put, but that's true, right? It's money we didn't spend on stuff that we should have spent it on. So, you know, as we expand our footprint, we have to have those additional monies, just like baseball, great to get the fields, but who's got to pay for the replacement? Us. So we just have to make sure we don't spend our, we don't spend further down the road than what we can afford to keep up.
And that's a really good point. Staff's had this conversation and it's, I guess you would say a little bit of a frustrating irony that we have fund balances that are available for things like what we're talking about, but we have yet to have consistent enough growth that we can make an ongoing annual commitment to pay raises or, you know, expanded programs. It's, it's an odd situation to be in where you have cash for a one-time expenditure, but we don't have a revenue growth to support ongoing commitments.
Any other?
Well, and that, and that may be a good way to look at what we do with some of the larger unexpected funds, you know? What sort of one-hit wonders can we knock out that won't require as much, you know, additional money in the, in the future? Or may bring us up to where we need to be so that our future maintenance is less.
Correct. And Commissioner Ryan asked in strategic planning whether that fund balance could be applied to the pay plan. And I may have answered too quickly that no, because of that, you know, one-time expenditure. But one possible use of it would be to hold it in advance, that if we're going to do a pay plan increase and we don't know what the total financial impact of that might be, combination of drawing down that reserve and growth might help us sustain it over the next two, three years. So, you know, that may, when you talk about eight and a half being the target and 10 being a possibility, maybe we stay at the 10, recognizing we may have to draw on that 10 if the pay plan impacts or not offset by revenue growth. Because the, in terms of hiring, you know, we, $15 an hour minimum wage is pretty prevalent in the employers we compete with. And I have to think that impacts our ability to hire.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments from the governing body? I don't know if I, are there any members of the public that have questions or comments about our budget? If not, I guess we will be adjourned until 4:00 unless you've got anything further for us.
I don't believe so.
Nope. We're just going to, yeah. More next, more to come next week, right?
Right, more fun next week.
Thank you.